Between work and all my other daily duties, it's hard for me to get to the bank. That's why I do all my banking using Sierra Central Online Banking with the mobile banking app. I just snap a picture of any checks I need to deposit, or I pay my bills with their online bill payer service. It's so easy and convenient. I use my laptop, desktop, PC, or mobile device anytime from anywhere. That's how I live life, at the speed of me.
This community was made for more. More kindness, more support, more hope. Together we can overcome anything. Stay active, stay healthy, stay connected. That's what a community does. Made for more.
I wanted to talk with you about the upcoming presidential election on November 3rd. Due to COVID-19, election officials across California have been directed to conduct an all mail ballot election for this election. This means that every active eligible voter will be mailed a ballot. What does this mean to Sutter County voters? Well, 70% of our voters already vote by mail. The 30% of voters who normally go to the polls will receive a ballot in the mail instead. We have sent every active registered voter a mailer this week asking you to verify your residence address and your mailing address if you have a P.O. box or prefer to have your ballot mailed to another location where you will be once ballots are mailed out in October. In this mailer, we will also explain the process for this election. It's simple. You'll receive your ballot in the mail. It's safer. You can make your voting decisions and complete your ballot comfortably and in the safety of your own home. It's secure. Seal your completed ballot in your postage paid envelope, sign it, date it, and return it by mail promptly so it is received well before Election Day. You also have the option to return your ballot in person at the elections office, 1435 Veterans Memorial Circle in Yuba City, at one of our convenient drop boxes located throughout the county, or at a voter service center. What's a voter service center? It's basically a polling place. You're welcome to bring your vote by mail ballot into one of our centers, starting Saturday, October 31st through Election Day, November 3rd. We will have COVID-19 safety measures in place. If you did not receive a ballot, you can come into this service center and request one, vote it, drop it in the mailbox, oh, and get your "I voted" sticker, of course. You can also bring your vote by mail ballot into our office during business hours after you receive it, vote it in the office, and drop it in the ballot box. And of course, get your "I voted" sticker. Not registered? No problem. You can visit the office starting October 5th, or at one of our voter service centers three days before the election to register and receive your ballot. Worried about the post office? I have been in constant contact with the post office regarding the upcoming election. They have been great partners in the process and are ready to meet this challenge. So remember, we will have five locations to serve you, we will have four exterior drop box locations, you will have three options to vote: in person, by mail, or by dropping it off. We will have two interior drop box locations, and of course, one Election Day.
Live streaming can be simple and not expensive. You may already have the basic tools right in your hand. But it's more than just pushing live to communicate effectively. That's where yubasutter.live and Live Streaming Y.S. on Facebook can help you. Make it easy to jump in. Just give us a call at (530) 301-2931, or visit our website, www.yuba-sutter.live. Yuba Sutter's home of live streaming and live streaming tools, live streaming services, technology, and training. Live streaming is yubasutter.live.
That's why I do all my banking using Sierra Central Online Banking with the mobile banking app. I just snap a picture of any checks I need to deposit, or I pay my bills with their online bill payer service. It's so easy and convenient. I use my laptop, desktop, PC, or mobile device anytime from anywhere.
Good evening and welcome to our local candidate forums. This evening is brought to you by the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce and the Appeal Democrat. My name is Marnie Sanders, and I am the CEO of the Chamber. I'd like to extend a special thanks to Live Oak Middle School and the community of Live Oak for allowing us to use this beautiful new gymnasium here in Live Oak. I'd also like to thank our sponsors for tonight's event and all of our forums. These forums have been made possible by Sierra Central Credit Union and Yuba Sutter Live. We'd also like to recognize some of our Chamber Champion Circle investors. Adventist Health &amp; Write Out, Adept Solutions, Calusa Casino Resort, Sutter Health, Hard Rock Hotel Casino Sacramento at Fire Mountain, and Recology. And thank you to the candidates this evening for joining us, and to our audience out there who has joined us on livestream to watch our forum this evening. I am now going to turn the program over to Joe McClure. Joe McClure is the Executive Vice President and Chief Banking Officer for Golden Pacific Bank. He is a member of our Government Affairs Committee and the Committee for these forums, and he is also a Chamber Board Member. Joe?
Great, thank you, Marnie. Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we will be hearing from candidates running for two seats on the Live Oak City Council: incumbent Lokvir Gog and incumbent Alex Tisa, and candidates Dale Carlson, Nancy Santana, Johnny Sabayos, Jeremy Chapdeline, and Cruz Mora. Now, here's how tonight's forum will work. Each candidate will receive 90 seconds for an opening statement, and then we'll have a series of questions provided by our committee, audience members, and readers of the Appeal Democrat. If you'd like your question to be considered, please submit your questions in the comments area of the platform you're watching this forum from. Please keep your questions brief, and questions must address all candidates, otherwise they will not be allowed, as questions cannot be directed to only one candidate. Please be aware that we already have dozens of questions for our candidates, so if we don't get to yours, we apologize, as we have time for only a certain number of questions tonight. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. Rebutts will be allowed only if there is a reference to a particular opposing candidate in another candidate's answer, and those rebuttals will be allowed for up to 30 seconds. At the end of the questions, each candidate will have up to two minutes for a closing statement, and no rebuttals will be allowed during the closing statements. Candidates, please direct your attention to our timekeeper, Jackie Lee. She will have three signs. One says 30 seconds, one says 15 seconds, and the third one says, "Time's up, your microphone's going to be shut off." Please be respectful of everyone's time and stay within your time limits tonight. Again, we'd like to thank those who've joined us on livestream or are watching these forums from other platforms. We appreciate your interest in learning more about tonight's candidates. I'd like to extend a special thank you to my fellow Candidate Forum Committee members who worked tirelessly to put these forums together: Bob Harlan, Steve Miller, Jackie Selman, Jackie Lee, and of course, our own Marnie Sanders. Our moderators tonight are Steve Miller, Editor for the Appeal Democrat, and Bob Harlan, Executive Director of the Yuba Sutter Calusa United Way, both of which have donated many hours to determine the issues pertinent to Live Oak and bring you tonight's forum. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to our moderators, Steve and Bob.
Thank you very much, Joe. Appreciate it, and thank you, candidates, for being with us this evening. As he mentioned, we do have a lot of potential questions, and we hope to get about seven questions asked this evening, and the forum should go for about an hour and 20 to an hour and 25 minutes total. We're going to start out with opening statements, and Alex Tisa, why don't you have the first one, up to 90 seconds?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the Yuba Sutter Chamber, the Appeal Democrat, and all the sponsors for this forum, as well as Matt Grobranson. Speaking with him, we were able, in the Yuba Sutter Chamber, we were able to use this middle school gym that was completed last year through Measure X. So I can't thank him enough, and thank the Yuba Sutter Chamber for hosting this event. And I'd also like to thank the audience tonight for viewing. This is a very important forum to have, to hear from all of these candidates. And I first off would also like to say that thank you for electing me four years ago. It's been a great honor of being the City Council Mayor and even serving as mayor. I can't tell you enough how much these four years have meant to me. I've learned so much, and we've put in some great work at the city. Just a quick recap, we have, we're starting the Live Oak Highway project, which is, I know all of you have seen, is in construction. That will be completed by fall 2021. It's a massive project for us, as well as the soccer park, the skate park, we've completed that as well, the Pennington Road project and water main. We've put in a new, we're putting upgrades for our water sewer plant. And again, and if you elect me again, I will continue to serve this community on very important issues, alonging the transportation and traffic, public safety as well. We purchased a new fire truck, and as well as new businesses and bringing businesses in. I can't thank you guys enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nancy Santana?
I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, Appeal Democrat, for this opportunity, my supporters and the viewers tonight. My family came to Live Oak over 100 years ago and began farming. I'm a mother of three children, daughter, sister, friend, banker, and community volunteer. I've been serving our communities for 30 years. My passion is community service. My community service background includes the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce as an ambassador, the American Cancer Society, the United Way Feed the Hungry, the Muscular Dysphagia Association, and I currently serve on the Sutter County Central Committee. I started working at the age of 12 in my father's small business. After working for my father, I started my career in banking and finance where I have worked for 22 years. What separates me from the other candidates are my qualifications and years of community service. I've bring to the council 22 years' experience in banking, finance, budgets, fraud, policy, and procedures. I have worked with the state and federal audits, and I have been serving our community for 30 years. Now, more than ever, we need to bring accountability and physical responsibility to our city council. I love our community and want to move Live Oak forward and see Live Oak affordable, attractive, and thriving again. And that is the reason I'm running for Live Oak City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lokvir Gog?
Thank you, Bob. Good evening. My name is Lokvir Singh Gog. I'm a father of three, longtime resident, and ardent supporter of the people of Live Oak. I'm a second-generation farmer with a vested interest in seeking our community thrive. 52 years ago, my family migrated from India and didn't read, write, or speak English. Thanks to Live Oak High School system, I learned English and graduated in '72. Attended college, got my degree in electronics, and started family in Live Oak. I was one of the pioneers of earth station technology in our area. I built my first parabolic antenna from surplus parts on Cedar or Peach Field on Kent Avenue. I set up distance learning via SAP at Beale Air Force Base and Yuba College. I joined Kiwanis Club of Yuba City in 2004. Together, we started Kiwanis Ski Club at Live Oak High School, and later started Kiwanis Club in Live Oak. I served as a Kiwanis Ski Club advisor for 14 years. I served on Kiwanis Club Board of Director, President of Yuba City and Live Oak Club, Lieutenant Governor, and Kiwanis Division 14 trustee. I serve on Live Oak Chamber of Commerce Bond Oversight Committee at Live Oak, Volunteer Senior Project Advisor. We started breakfast with Santa in Live Oak, and past eight years, I served City Council and two-time mayor of Live Oak.
Thank you very much. Cruz Mora?
Thank you. Hola, my name is Cruz. I am just grateful for the Chamber to have this opportunity, and it's an honor to be here. I also wanted to say, as a former Tiger, thank you, Live Oak Middle School, for accommodating this forum. As mentioned, my name is Cruz Mora. I am running for Live Oak City Council. I am a 21-year-old resident of Live Oak, born and raised here. I am proud to be a Live Oak resident. I study public health and policy at California State University Chico, and I understand what it takes to be a council member. I started my career in public servant at 19 at the California State Legislature in the Assembly, and presently at the California Department of State Hospitals. I hope, and I dream, and I have a passion of serving my community, which is Live Oak. I also was involved heavily with student organizations in high school and college, prominently known in Key Club for my service in Live Oak High School. I'm compelled to run today because I've found out some naughty things the city has been doing. So tonight, I hope you voters will understand and learn the issues at hand here in Live Oak, and I will respectfully ask that you elect Cruz Mora to Live Oak City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeremy Chapdeline?
Good evening, Live Oak. First off, I'd like to thank everybody who made this Candidates Forum possible this evening. My family came to Live Oak over 14 years ago, and we love it here. My wife and I have six children between the ages of 10 and 21. I've been very active in the community over the years, serving the Intonal Parents Club, volunteer coaching multiple youth basketball and soccer teams, helping with numerous PRX and REX events, and I've also volunteered as a high school senior project mentor. I've represented Live Oak as a Sutter County Planning Commissioner, and the current Chairperson for the Live Oak Planning Commission, and currently represent Live Oak on the Board of Commissioners for the Regional Housing Authority. I'm uniquely qualified for this position with over 15 years of professional local government experience, working for larger cities. As a council member, I will do everything within my power to promote Live Oak as a motivational and effective leader who is open-minded to innovation and dedicated to community improvement. Once elected, my top priorities will be to reduce city operating costs, obtain grant funding for new projects to update our utilities and infrastructure. I will also increase collaboration and explore opportunities for new projects and programs with Sutter County, Live Oak Unified School District, and our other local regional partners. Together, over the, or, I hope that we can celebrate many accomplishments together over the next four years with your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny Sabayos?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin with giving thanks to the Appeal Democrat Chamber of Commerce and sponsors for putting together tonight's event. I'd also like to thank the viewers and the voters for doing your due diligence and caring for the future of our city. As previously mentioned, my name is Johnny Sabayos. My bride, Amy, and I moved to Live Oak in 2012. We have three children, 10, 8, and 5, and in a season of distance learning, we ask for your prayers. Serving others has been founded and motivated by my faith. I'm thankful to have served various leadership roles through our church here in Live Oak Victory Chapel since 2004. I've also served as a head wrestling coach for my alma mater, Biggs High School, Go Wolverines, for eight years, and now serve and volunteer my time to my kids' wrestling team, the Live Oak Lions Wrestling Club, Go Lions. In addition to that, I've served with the Gridley Rotary Club as treasurer for multiple terms, and now currently sit on the board for the Children's Hope Foster Family Agency in Gridley. Excuse me. Currently, I am a business owner and certified financial planner. I earn my living through analyzing and managing finances, budgets, and investments for individuals and businesses. I'm thankful to have the experiences and skills that I do and able to offer to my city. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Carlson?
Hello, my name is Dale Carlson. My career began with one of the most efficient, well-run corporations in America, that was United Parcel Service. I worked for UPS for 28 years, and 18 of those years was in operational industrial engineering management. Next, I was employed by a small utility company as an engineering coordinator, a warehouse supervisor, and assistant customer accounts manager, in which we dealt with a lot of government reports annually and budgets. I was also, I also worked closely with the Regulatory Commission of Alaska in regards to tariff regulations, and my daughter and I, daughter-wife and I moved to Live Oak in 2012, so my wife could be closer to her family. I've been employed by the City of Live Oak for the past four years in the Public Works Department, and those four years have given me an inside view of how the city works, where money is spent, and where it needs to be spent, and also how to repair and maintain the infrastructure of the city. As an insider, I do see where the money is being spent and where it needs to be allocated as well. I was a parent volunteer at Ensl Elementary for three years, on the Live Oak High School Site Council for two years, and a Live Oak High School Booster Club member for two years. As a city council member, I would concentrate on evaluating and reducing costs, bringing revenue into the city, and at the end of the day, we all have to realize that the city has to be run like a business, there has to be enough revenue to cover expenses. I want to represent everyone in Live Oak fairly and equally while strengthening our economic development and bringing continuity to the council and the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to start with our questions now, and each person, hopefully, will get a chance to give the answer first as we rotate through the panel this evening. You have up to 60 seconds to answer each of the questions. We'll start out, Steve, why don't you go ahead and ask Alex Tisa the first question?
Alex, has Live Oak done all it can to assist businesses that are hurting badly because of COVID-19? What more could be done?
Well, as a family that has a business in Live Oak, Betty's Authentic Mexican Restaurant, we have seen, and being on the city council, we have seen businesses go, revenue go down, and just like with many other businesses, down COVID. And I'm very fortunate to sit on CACOG, which Sacramento Area Council of Government, and through there, we had, we've done some work which can provide some funding for businesses. And one way we can do that is having citizens that shop locally, they will receive benefits from the city in a reduction of city fees. And that policy that I will create is called Shop LO, and that's one way that businesses can continue to thrive through these hard times, and also as well as assist businesses, because right now, everyone's hurting a little bit, and we need to help everyone out, the residents and the businesses, and through Shop LO, businesses will continue to succeed in Live Oak throughout the COVID-19.
Thanks, Alex. Nancy?
We can do more. We can work with the Chamber of Commerce promoting more business. The Chamber helps business prosper and thrive. When I was with the Chamber as an ambassador, we were promoting one or more businesses each week. There were also PPP loans to help our small businesses during COVID. There was also Economic Injury Disaster Loan that was available to help the farmers. I believe we need to open back up our economy sooner rather than later, and our schools. Thank you.
Thanks. Lokvir?
Thank you, Steve. I think we can do a lot more than we have done. We started with the HIV project, and I proposed that we give all the businesses a break on water and sewer bill, and while we're trying to do that, we started, the COVID started, and we were not, we were in the process, only got a couple of businesses that got a break on the water and sewer bill, and then COVID started, and then we got turmoil in the city, and we're not able to reach agreement where we could give restaurants a break, and I think the city itself can do a lot more. We can get, give small loans to our businesses, because most of the business here are mom-and-pop business. We only got a couple of corporate business, and we need to do all we can, because everybody in this town got all their eggs in one basket. It's a family thing, and they need to be supported, and do everything that we can to do, help them out on this situation.
Thanks. Cruz? Cruz?
Yes, thank you. It's reassuring that I hear the incumbents stating that the city needs to do more for its small businesses. It is not as reassuring to know that that has not happened yet. We are in month six or seven or eight, I've lost track of the COVID crisis. These measures should have been implemented in March, at late April. We need to go further, bolder, to establish more small business in Live Oak and continue to support the small businesses in Live Oak currently. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeremy?
Yeah, unfortunately, I believe we can do a lot more. I've seen, you know, neighboring agencies and jurisdictions that have seemed to be a lot more, a lot further ahead with CARES Act funding and grants for their cities, businesses. And just sitting in the, or observing the recent budget talks, I hear talks about reimbursement for operating costs, impacts to facilities, but it, but that part of it is, seems absent and, and that funding's going relatively fast. So I believe it's, I believe we can do more and I believe it's important that we do so very soon to, for these businesses to benefit. Thank you.
Thanks. Johnny?
So I certainly do agree that we can do more and I think that for every community, it's going to look different, but I think it begins with communicating with our business owners and finding what the needs are and being able to provide a more precise answer, an effective answer for them. You know, funny enough, I had personal experience with making efforts to support local business. Here a few months ago, we made a weekend effort titled Love Live Oak and we championed around the Penny Candy Store. And at the end of that weekend, it was just pleasing to hear from the business owners that that was their best day since the start of the pandemic. And so I think that the bright side to all that is that it proves that our community is amazing and that when we focus on championing our businesses, amazing things can happen.
Thanks. Dale?
Okay, it did start with the highway project. It was tough for people to get on and off the highway to get to businesses and then of course, we got hit with the COVID. And once COVID hit, a lot of the restaurants had to close down, but a lot of people have come up with unique ways to make sure that they can keep their businesses open. But there does need to be more done. I know there's money from the program in the city and how that's going to be dispersed would probably be a percentage of business loss throughout these months and that would probably be about the only thing I can see right now that I know of that is actually going to provide help to the businesses. And as long as everybody keeps trying to buy local and shop local and eat local, that would certainly help matters out a lot. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you all.
And going to our next question, we'll pose it first to Nancy Santana. Name a couple of your pet issues that you're anxious to work on should you be elected.
The city budget, some, so many vital things revolve around our city budget, water and sewer rates, taxes, education, youth programs, roads, businesses, and public safety, and these will be my priorities once elected. There have been discrepancies over the years in the city budget and overspending. There have been large posting errors that were not caught. In banking, you have to account for every penny. There is no room for error. The overspending and misuse of funds needs to come to an end after reviewing the budget. I want to make sure we have a balanced budget. A balanced budget means good credit for our city. I want to update our general fund so our vision is clear for investors.
Lockfair?
I'll repeat the question again, please.
Everybody has a couple of pet issues and what are a couple of them that you have that you're anxious to work on should you be elected for another term?
Okay, well, first one is to complete the 99 corridor project and second is to get the budget straightened out because every year, we had a big old mistakes. I caught a $200,000 mistake in the budget last year. I caught a $40,000 mistake in the budget this year and yet the council keep passing the budget every year. And I believe that we need to count, hold someone accountable for those mistakes and then we need to do audit on these people and why are these people still employed at the city after they make so many mistakes? Then I'd like to see high-speed internet come into town so we can have internet-related jobs in town where people can have, from bigger city can live in Live Oak, do their business over the net, and our kids that are doing at-home schooling, it would benefit them, it would benefit anybody in this town and this would grow the town into a good, prosperous town.
Okay, thank you. Cruz?
I'm running for city council to transform our small town into a thriving city while also creating a government that works for its residents. How do we do that? Well, you have to, again, think outside the box. Public utilities are a hot commodity, especially today in Live Oak. There's an idea where the city can own public utilities, municipal utilities, and that's not limited to just sewer and water or lighting. It's also potentially municipal broadband to not expect others to bring Wi-Fi or broadband to our city, but for the city leaders to act and bring municipal broadband. Additionally, we need to increase the city's revenue portfolio for our city. We are in deep trouble if we don't act. Thank you.
Jeremy?
Yeah, two of my top priorities were reducing city operating costs. The budget is a huge item. It was just passed two weeks ago for the current budget, which was actually passed late. And it was alarming because it's really, it was really presented in a way that's somewhat misleading as well. We passed the budget with a $263,000 general fund deficit and then also the way it was presented, there's a number of other restricted funds that are going to go negative at the end of the year for about another half a million dollars. You know, the city's budget is only as healthy as the general fund and these are restricted funds, so the general fund is going to get hit with these costs at the end of the year. And we have to do better with that. We have to do better with marketing and also bring in additional grants for projects to address the infrastructure and utilities as well. Thank you.
Johnny?
So as the financial guy, I can't help but be drawn to budget issues and so it certainly draws my attraction. And so certainly a concern from, coming from the marketplace is that if, if we're unable to sustain a certain level of revenue and not meet our debt covenants, that certainly is going to put us in a whole heap of trouble along with putting us out of position for potential future grants, which then has its own ripple effect. So I think starting from there and providing assistance to the team at the city as to addressing these issues and helping improve everyone on the team.
Thank you. Dale?
Okay, my main goal would be to, actually off the Sutter Grand Jury Report, there's a lot of items in the budget that do need to be looked at and need to review a lot of the contracts for a lot of our vendors and everybody such as that, to make sure we do have some beneficial contract language in there for the city of Live Oak. My other goal is to try and attract more business into the city also. And out on the highway project, we had a lot of two-inch galvanized iron line and we would repair that, you know, year after year after year. And now we're going to actually have in new six-inch water mains and by having that infrastructure on the highway there, that's going to open up the CA 99 corridor to actually be able to bring businesses in and support them with the utilities that they need.
Thank you. And Alex?
Well, I'm sitting on the CACOG board. We are working through the city on providing transportation grant funding and one key issue that I'm working on is here on Pennington with the middle school right here, we're getting some grant funding to repave the road as well as creating new roads and sidewalks on Apricot to connect the KB Homes to the older side of Live Oak. There's an orchard there that kind of divides the city there and the KB Homes where we only have that one entrance onto Pennington and as well with the highway project. We needed to do the highway project for businesses to come in. It's, I know it's difficult for the current businesses, but a lot of these retailers, they want to see the highway expanded and drainage and sidewalk. That's going to attract their businesses to come in and that's one really big issue that we're working on is the transportation and the flow of, through the city and as well as the economy because we need to see that to grow. That's one, that's the best way for us to get revenue other than, of course, you know, probably taxes and sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks. We'll start with you, Lockfair. The most recent grand jury report noted several unfavorable issues with Live Oak city government. Do you have any general takeaways from the report?
Well, absolutely. Which one do you like to know? There's a whole bunch of them. I mean, when you're looking at it, is you have a, they hired a city manager, they give him an excessive amount of salary, they give him a six-month worth of severance pay for working here three months, and then he turns around, gives the restaurant guys agenda that's already been rejected two times and he says, well, we'll divide the restaurant business in two, east side and west side, and east side would get, one councilman can vote for the other and the other side can vote for the other party. And I asked our city administrator, I said, can you give me attorney that is not the city attorney, but outside attorney so I can verify if this is not a violation of Brown Act? He laughed, said, no. And so when that thing come up back up and I told the government, I told our city administrator, this is the lowest form of government that we have seen in a long time.
Okay, thanks. Cruz?
Thank you for the question. It's very important. I think today we see seven candidates running for two seats, probably primarily because we see misappropriation of city funds along with other issues. And it's, I've lived here my whole life. This shouldn't be happening. I think you can expect this in Washington DC, but not here in a small Live Oak. It is something that appalls me. I wake up every day since I've learned about this and just thinking of ways that we can hold the culprits accountable because this, these things should not be happening in Live Oak. For example, the Sutter County Grand Jury Report found that there was a clear conflict of interest with appointing the financial director and interim city manager. I can go on and on about the ethical implications and the other background information that is pertinent to the council's ability to serve. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeremy?
So I find many of the, well, really all the findings alarming. Most of the other candidates have talked about the financial side. Something for me that I experienced myself during the last few years is the Brown Act violations, the, really the behavior and the lack of ethics from some of the, mostly previous council members, but even still some of the sitting council members. And that really has affected the morale and the, the community to even be active. You know, they don't even want to come, come to meetings. They feel like they're all previously decided and that's really got to change. To me, we have to have an active community. That's what makes council all about, that's what provides us our direction that we need for this community. So that's, that was a huge one for me. Thank you.
Thanks. Johnny?
Yeah, numerous problems, but I think that addressing the internal controls within the city could address a lot of these problems. You know, obviously, there were things that fell in the cracks with projects not being completed, staff not being aware of various projects going on. So yeah, there needs to be a huge improvement with internal controls and making sure that everyone's on board. Could be a very well, a quick communication fix. And then little things such as the educational requirements required from us council members. I'm required to take at least 30 hours of continued education every year for my licenses. You can just go online to the approved vendor and get it done. So how this was not completed is just not acceptable.
Thank you. Dale?
Okay, my main one, like I already mentioned one time, is the contracts with our vendors because there can be serious cost overruns in those types of contracts if there's not good language in there that protects the city from bad advice or whatever the case may be. And then, of course, my other one is going to be some of the expenditures that I really don't feel are necessary and that rate payers should be paying, such as a Christmas party for $3,500 and buying other things that I have seen throughout the time that I have worked here. And it's just not fair for rate payers to be paying for stuff that isn't there. And with the Sutter Grand Jury Report, it opened up the, everybody's eyes to stuff that is going on in the city and it needs to be fixed as soon as possible.
Thanks. Alex?
Well, with the grand jury report, it's been very unfortunate because for some of those projects that were delayed, it really came down to timing and who was in charge of that time. And we had a previous city manager that, you know, there was issues of delivering those projects on time. And now we have a new city manager, Aaron Palmer, who, a lot of those projects have been completed since then and we're working very hard, again, with our consultants and with those companies to finish these projects that need be done as well as, of course, is some conduct with the councilors as well. They should be acting very professional. They should be treating everyone on staff in the communities with respect. And of course, there were some issues there and at the same time, it's, you know, holding the council accountable as well and with a lot of these funding issues. You know, that's something there that needs to be in top shape. And again, it's, working through this grand jury report, we're finding a lot of solutions. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. And Nancy?
The grand jury report was disturbing to me and I've been to city council meetings where I've witnessed myself, when the citizens go up to talk, they are not being listened to. That is not acceptable to me because the city council works for the citizens and it's disrespectful. And for example, one of the meetings, I was there and they were talking about hiring consultants for a project and they are supposed to get five bids and the citizens asked if they did and they were just blown off. As far as the numerous financial issues, they need someone like myself with audit, budget, and financial experience on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next question, we'll start with Cruz and this is from an Appeal Democrat reader. To some, it appears the current council lacks cohesion that might inhibit it from making real progress. What do you think? If you see that is an issue, what could you do as a council member to change it?
Yeah, thank you to the viewer who sent that in. Very important question. I was shocked when I read that in the grand jury report and so I decided to go be an active participant in city council and I experienced what our viewers saw. I was shut out from a city council meeting, said, sorry, we're not letting anybody in. It was not acceptable at all. These were not under COVID circumstances. It was before people couldn't go. So it was very, very upsetting to be told as a resident of the city that I cannot go and engage with my city council members. I think at its core, a city council should be able to listen and accommodate its citizens. That's job number one. Thank you.
Jeremy?
Yeah, so I, I've seen it. I've witnessed the lack of cohesion and to me, it's, it really does have to change. We need, we need a cohesive council and hopefully, council members can start to put aside their own projects or even agendas and just really focus on the community. That's what I would like to bring to the council. Even with everything going on, I believe we have to work together. We have to be respectful of each other and that also goes back to the grand jury report regarding ethics. And to me, I believe we also need a comprehensive code of conduct and ethics that, and we lack that right now. And I think that would be, would help the situation a lot and hold council accountable for a lot of these actions.
Johnny?
Great question. I think that if anyone has been monitoring the most recent meetings, you can see the lack of cohesion. And I guess just putting my old coaching hat on, you just bring the team together and you find out what the problem is. And until it's addressed, there's, it's going to continue to persist. And until it's addressed, there's, it's going to continue to persist. And so I think it's just a matter of someone stepping up to the plate, bringing everyone together, and hashing out the problems, and giving everyone a safe environment to, to deal with it and bring solutions to it.
Dale?
First of all, we have to realize, we don't work for the city, we work for all the residents and business owners in the city of Live Oak. They are our bosses, and we need to come together on the city council to make sure that everybody is on the same boat, they're working to benefit the people and not just go off on their own little tangents on those types of things. And my time as being in management, all those years with UPS, you learned how to sell the idea to people to get everybody to buy into the idea that we all needed to work together, and you come up with a solution to the problem when everybody works together like that, too. Thank you.
Alex?
Well, my parents and, and going, graduating from the Live Oak School District, all the teachers here, they really harp on teach, uh, respect, treating others with respect. And unfortunately, we, we have a, a council member that currently right now is not being very respectful to the council member staff. And if you, you watch the meetings, unfortunately, due to COVID, they're all online. But again, we have a council member that doesn't follow the proper, proper conduct, which makes the meetings difficult. But I've been on two different councils in my four years, and, and of course, everybody's going to have disagreements, they're going to argue on certain issues, but at the end of the day, we have to be respectful. We're reflecting the Live Oak citizens, and I want, I treat everybody with respect. I know serving with Lockfair, it's been, him and I have been able to work together in a fantastic way, even though at some issues we don't agree with. But again, that's how it is. And with the current council, there, there's four of us that really work to, that can work together and follow the conduct, and that's what we need. Whoever is elected, that's the first thing we have to do, is respect each other, respect the staff, and respect the citizens. Thank you.
Nancy?
I plan to update the municipal codes once elected, and I agree with Jeremy, we need a code of conduct policy. I will prepare that. I have been in numerous city council meetings where the citizens are not being heard. That needs to change, and I will help change that. We need leaders that love the people of Live Oak. Thank you.
Lockfair?
I am a servant for Live Oak community. I believe that when council is not working together, it's not benefit to the society, to our city. Have you ever had a, for example, had a Mercedes five-cylinder diesel motor, and you know, when one cylinder goes out, and four of them are going to butt throw you out of the, out of the seat of the Mercedes? And that's the way our council is right now. We need to work together, we need to let people discuss items openly, we need to have our finance statement put back into the agenda so we can approve that rather than mailing it out to the council and never taking a vote on it. There's a lot of other things, issues here. We don't need to bring our personal issues from the past of what has happened to you and then bring it here into this council right now and then bringing a code of conduct. There is a code of conduct. Have respect for others, they'll respect you.
Thank you.
Thanks. With this, we'll start with Jeremy, and we're going to stick with the grand jury report a little bit and maybe get to a couple specifics here. First, the grand jury highlighted issues regarding consulting contracts that were costing the city unnecessary expenses and opening the door to financial loss and litigation. How should the city correct that issue? And secondly, the grand jury also noted a lack of oversight with public works projects, which resulted in delays and additional costs. What do you propose to do about that situation?
So, starting with the consultant contracts, we, we have to update the finance policies and procedures. Most, pretty much all city, state jurisdictions have a full procedure. Many, many follow a rule of three for getting bids, those types of policies and procedures. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, that hasn't been practiced here over the years. So we, we have to get that in place. There's huge implications for the public contract code and, and many other various code reasons. In regards to the, the public works projects, I think it just boils, boils down to a, a lack of oversight. We, we have consultants, managing consultants, we, we need to be more involved as a city. That's something I hope to bring to this council. I, my 15 years of public service have been in public works and infrastructure. So, thank you.
Thanks. Johnny?
Great question. So with regards to the consultants, again, just to piggyback on what I mentioned earlier, the internal controls, there should be a process in place with regards to how many bids should be reviewed, and, and so it begins there. And if it's not being followed, then that needs to be addressed. If there's not a control in place, then we need to build one out. And then as far as the oversight, again, it's what's the process? If there's not a process, create one. If there is a process, then we need to go to the next problem. I think it's a simple solution.
Thank you. Dale?
The grand jury actually brought a pretty good point as far as the contracts and consultants, and that they really needed to be reviewed, and they haven't been reviewed for years and years and years. So it's going to be really important to maybe get another outside source to look at these contracts that knows contractual, contractual language and does something beneficial for the city in those contracts to make sure that we're not going to be at risk for losing money. And then as far as the public works projects, there, there's a lot of projects going on in the city, and a lot of times, it's really understaffed as far as the public works department, and it, it's tough to get everything done. We need to make sure that we have our engineers on board and the consultants, as well as all the top management in the city to make sure that these don't slip through the cracks. There needs to be a little chart showing what's, what's going on, where there's a whiteboard in an office or whatever, like they had up at Oroville Dam when they were doing that, have it all in order so you can tell what's being done and when it's being done by. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
So yes, in the, concerning the, the contracts, unfortunately, in the past, there wasn't really any contracts for, for bids for the attorney, there wasn't for the financial director position, we, and that's some issues that we had with the previous city manager where it's like, we should be having contract discussions. Finally, with the, with the new city manager we have now, we should be looking at, at attorney services, financial director, again, get multiple bids, and also for planning. Since my time on council, we, we created a committee, a subcommittee of two council members to look at some of the, the bids. And I, for that, for, I was on that, that committee for the, for the planners, city planners we have, and they, they do a great job. Now, at the same time, concerning the, the public works, is some of those issues were just natural. I mean, we had high rain levels that delayed the wastewater on the west project, on West Pennington, and of course, we're dealing, we're dealing with the state with the solar project on their sewer. We're doing that to, to save costs on the sewer project, but of course, we have to deal with the state. Thank you.
Nancy?
There is a process in place to get five bids. That isn't happening, it hasn't been happening. This is not acceptable. The consultants cost quite a bit of money, and I was at the meetings where the citizens were asking, why didn't you get more bids? Have you got more bids? And it was just blown off. And some of the citizens said, you know, maybe local people can do it for less money, and that was just blown off. As far as public works, the west water line has been in process for eight years. It's just taking too long, and policies and procedures are just not being followed, and we need to change that.
Thank you. Lockfair?
Thank you, Steve. Previous city manager had a limit of spending $25,000 a day telling the council. We reduced that down to $15,000. I asked the council to review city attorney's contract two years ago, and I was blocked by the city council. After that, I asked, put the finance director contract, I'd bring that up to date, said, let's review this, and the city council did not let me even discuss after a second motion was made. And after that, we got a well seven that's been going on for about 10 years. They've been telling us it's going to get done real quick. Well, come to find out, they weren't getting enough water out of there. Now, we're supposed to have this thing completed in September, there's still no power over there, they can't even check the performance. I said, well, get a generator on it. Oh, we can't do that? Why can't you do that? You got to check this well, you got to...
Thank you. Cruz?
Would you mind repeating the question for me?
Sure, there were two parts. Grand jury highlighted issues regarding consulting contracts that are costing the city unnecessary expenses and opening, possibly opening the door to financial loss and litigation. What would you do about that? And secondly, the grand jury noted a lack of oversight with public works projects, which resulted in delays and additional costs. What would you do about that?
Thank you. Yeah, it's disappointing that we have these contracts that have not been negotiated. The, the contract language is very, very suspicious, it's just a lot of discrepancies with the, the language in the contract. Additionally, they, they have to be reimagined at the, at its core. Who is writing the language? Is it the consultant themselves writing the language for their own contract? Or is it city council or city attorneys? We don't, we don't know that because these records are not public yet. Additionally, I believe that with public works, if you bring those two items together, you can have a public works program that is getting residents to become consultants for the city, if necessary, and if there is that capacity with residents. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to start the next question with Johnny. The grand jury also recommended creation and implementation of a water rate increase, which I think has been a hot topic in the past as well. Your thoughts?
Yeah, so in part of that study, it showed that Live Oak certainly had one of the lowest rates with some of the surrounding communities. I think it's a worthwhile option to explore. I, I believe that there was a study that was done quite a few years ago that supported the rate increase and a plan to support that, but unfortunately, it did not pass. So I think it's worth entertaining, worth reviewing once again, and I think that, bigger picture, it'd put us back in compliance with the, the notes that we have in place for that project, so.
Dale?
Okay, I think a lot of the misconception with the water rates, too, is that Live Oak does have the lowest water rate in the surrounding area, and people look at their bill and they just say it's a $95 or $97 bill, and they're not breaking it up. With $23 for the water being the lowest water rate in the, the surrounding area, the, the thing that makes that bill come up so high is the sewer rate, and that is $68. And there's a state-of-the-art treatment plant out there with UV lights and everything, and it does cost money to run everything. And so, you know, at one point or another, since we haven't had a rate increase for 15 years or whatever that number was, there very well may need to be a rate increase. And people have to realize, too, that it's not going to be a huge increase because it's already $23, which is a very minimal amount.
Alex?
Yes, so my first year on council, that's, that we worked on the study, and at the time, the, you know, it was going to be a large increase, which the council didn't agree on, which had never passed. And, and my belief that if we need to do a water increase, it needs to be just a marginal small account, a few percentage points. Of course, in that study, it said, it was pretty confusing, it had a 40% increase, then it would drop, and it would just flow. We need a, we need a, a certain rate fee adjustment that would maybe be, of course, maybe 5%. But the big thing that we have to do is, since the sewer fund rate is much larger, we can move that, working with our new city manager and our staff, if we move that to the property tax. So now the monthly utility fee for water would be a lot, lot less restrictive of, of, currently it's $23, now let's say if it's 25 or 30, that for once a month is huge. And of course, the sewer fee would be put on the property tax, which would have to be paid twice a year. So again, that's something that, options that we're working with.
Nancy?
We can't keep increasing the water and sewer rate fees. We just keep increasing things. We're going through a pandemic right now, a lot of people are suffering. I don't think that's something that we should be looking at right now. Our general fund has $4 million in reserves. If we manage our budget better, I don't think we need to increase water and sewer rates. Thank you.
Lockfair?
Thank you. The finance, the water rate's not been increased for possibly over 12 years, and the issue has come up many times, but it's not followed through because the city did not follow its own policy. When the meters were allocated for everyone, the city didn't put meters on its own facilities. City is responsible for using the water that everybody else pays, should be treated the same. So the city was supposed to put so much money into the funds, but they said, yes, the council said, yes, and then they decided not to do that. And so the, the water fund is going down, but what we need to do is, we need to find out who is taking payments out of that fund, who is drawing salary, and we need to see who that is, how much time they spend, and that's how we can decide if we need to move forward or stay where we at. The salary part is what we don't know. They put a bunch of hours on a piece of paper, gave it to us, said, well, this is what we're drawing out of here, but that wasn't the case.
Cruz?
Lockfair makes a great point. I did a public health, a public records request for personnel budget, and it states that city council gets 10% from Water Fund 12, 13 into their salary. So the, the monthly contribution that they get for being a council member, they get paid 20% from your water fees. That's crazy. We just eliminate that, and there's no increase, and there's a possible decrease in your rates. Additionally, there is anywhere between 5 to 45% of Wat, a Water Fund 12, 13, and 14 for city staff. And this is just ridiculous. I don't believe that residents of Live Oak should be paying the salaries of the workers. There are designated funds, it's for employee funds. It, it's simple.
Jeremy?
So, to me, we, the, the city spent a ton of money on, on rate studies over the years. I believe there's, there's plenty of data there to revisit. To me, the, the rate nexus has some flaws. Just looking at the end of this year, we have the Sewer Enterprise Fund is estimated to be sitting at a $2.4 million surplus, yet we have the Water Enterprise Fund sitting at a $265,000 deficit. We share operators, we share staff for both the sewer and water fund. To me, with, with these types of balances, we should be able to go through that, study the, that rate nexus and, and find a solution to pick up the, this additional, the additional funding needed and, and balance these funds, not, not just draw one way down, so.
Thank you. Thanks. Steve, time for one more question. Just one?
Just one. Unless everybody wants to stay for two.
Well, here's a question that I put together from a couple different suggestions by readers, and we'll start with Dale. Constituents want growth to create a more economically viable area, but they don't want growth to interfere with their lifestyles or their views. How do you walk this wire? What can be done to stimulate development in a way that's acceptable to the constituency?
Well, like I said before, too, we don't work for the city, we need to make sure that we get everybody's inputs. There's a lot of business people here that I've talked to, they have extremely good ideas how to bring more business in and what they need to be able to do that. And if we, like, with the highway corridor now, that's basically what it's going to be, is bring in new business into the highway corridor there. I know it's been talked about before, making like a downtown area, but that costs a lot of money, it takes a lot of infrastructure. And the thing with infrastructure is, once you start putting infrastructure in, there's really no cost to it to begin with as far as maintenance, but you get 20, 25 years down the road, and all of a sudden, your infrastructure costs go sky high. So a person has to basically listen to the residents, talk to the business owners, and decide what they want to do also, so everybody buys into the idea, and it's a concerted effort for everybody.
Thanks, Dale. Alex?
Well, the first thing, again, with growth and concerning our residents, the first thing the city, the city should not do is increase taxes on the residents. That's one thing, again. Live Oak is a great, you know, quiet city, very peaceful, but at the same time, we do need some, of course, economic growth and, and new businesses. Of course, we need to find businesses that are not competing with existing businesses in town, because again, a lot of these businesses we have in town are, are family-owned, and they've been continuing to survive in this, in this world. And at the same time, the issue that we have with some, with some of the residents and businesses is the proper location and how to get there. I know everything is on the highway with the businesses, but if you can put some businesses off the highway and make it more amenable and easier for, for residents to even walk there, because currently with, with this highway, it's not very easy to, to walk to these businesses. And of course, the, the issue we have with the rail line as well. If we can put some businesses on, on the western side, so you don't have to deal with the railroad train, thank you. railroad train, thank you.
Thanks. Nancy?
Excessive regulations just destroy small businesses. Small businesses make up 80% of the businesses in the United States, including Live Oak. Less government is better government. With high taxes and heavy regulations, it's just difficult. We have sent so many small businesses away. At one time, Live Oak was affordable and thriving. Live Oak had its own hotel, diamond walnut plant, a motorcycle track, lumberyard, Bank of America, its own police department, Live Oak Women's Prison, seven bars, Casa Lupi. We need to be more competitive with development fees and reduce impact fees. We shouldn't have to go out of town to spend our money and get our needs met. Live Oak was thriving and charming at one time. We can keep it that way, and by reducing fees.
Okay, thanks. Lockfair?
What Nancy described here is what I witnessed when I moved into Live Oak in 1968, April 1968. The town was thriving. There was cars on Broadway all the time, all the stores were packed, the grocery store and everything. What we're working on now is, once the highway project is completed, we're going to have a continuous sidewalk from one end of town to the other on both sides of the highway. What that will allow is people to park their car and walk distance. We have people that want to come in and want to start businesses, they want to start food restaurants and things like that. We're negotiating their placement, and we want them to have certain restrictions on them so that they develop in certain ways, and that it would not hurt our previous businesses that are mom and pop businesses in this town. And we're working very hard to bring in new businesses into town, and we'll get them here, just a matter of the 99 project being completed, and it'll beautify the town, and it will not look like a ghost town anymore.
Thank you. Cruz?
Would you do me the honor and repeat the question one more time?
Sure. Constituents want growth to create a more economically viable area, but they don't want growth to interfere with their lifestyles or views. How do you walk this wire? What can be done to stimulate development in a way that's acceptable to the constituents?
Yeah, yeah. Simply, we have to develop Live Oak how residents want. And we start that by, you know, including residents within that conversation of, how do we want to develop Live Oak? When we talk about city beautification and redevelopment, well, Live Oak's not really, it's never been developed. It's never had, you know, proper housing units, it's never had proper shopping entertainment centers, it's never had a good, proper grocery stores. These things need to be done and implemented in this development of Live Oak. I am proposing a master plan for 20, 50, and 100 years for Live Oak. And in that is that transition between how do we get today to a developed Live Oak. And we need to include residents in that conversation. Unfortunately, in the past, we've been turned away when we want to voice our opinion. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeremy?
So over the years, the councils of 10, 12 years ago, did a lot of great work. They put together a lot of projects, they had a lot of foresight. And unfortunately, with the turmoil with council over the years, those things were lost. The highway project is great, it's a great example of one of those projects, but it's really the last one of one of those legacy projects. So to me, we have to, we have to get the right people on the council with the foresight to start that work again. These projects, grant funding, all these things take quite a bit of time. So we have a lot of work to do. On top of that, the community engagement, same thing, it went away. And we need to get updated plans, we need to hear from current residents, not from 15 years ago, even though there is some work that has been started and a good baseline, but we have to get the public engagement back involved and really understand what this community wants. So, thank you.
Johnny?
So I believe that certainly being a business-friendly city is critical, just as Nancy mentioned earlier. But to piggyback on something Lockfair mentioned earlier, we have momentum currently with infrastructure being addressed in Live Oak. But the internet infrastructure could very well be the next phase to be addressed, because currently in our COVID environment, a lot of individuals in the Bay Area are realizing that they no longer need to live in those areas. And if we could become a city that is business-friendly and draw that talent to Live Oak, then I believe that that can begin to kick off that next growth phase for us. And so, being business-friendly, creating, addressing, or moving, keeping the momentum of infrastructure are keys.
Thank you very much.
Well, that concludes our questions. We're now going to have our closing statements. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to give their closing statement. And we're going to go in reverse order and start with Dale, and then go in reverse order to Alex.
Okay, first of all, I'd just like to thank you all for putting this forum on tonight so all of us candidates could see what our commitments are for the city of Live Oak and the residents and the business owners that actually make up the city. It's important to have a mixture of city council members with various backgrounds, such as ones that have been operating businesses, people that know how to read contextual language and make sure their language gets in there to protect the city, that know efficiency standards, and how the city works internally. That is going to be a very huge asset to the city council. There are many areas in which we need to look at as far as saving money and make our city more efficient, but first of all, what a person always has to do is find the root cause of what the problem is as far as a budget or anything that you're going to try and fix. And until you determine that root cause, you're not going to be able to do much. And with the cooperation of management and the city council, I think that's going to be an extremely manageable task. There needs to be discussion on items, we need to ask for community input, and council members need to know and understand every agenda item that comes up. So when the roll call vote comes up, you know you're voting for what the residents want, since you've been talking to them. And that is going to be a very big deal as far as making sure we make the right decision for the people of Live Oak. If elected, I'll put my past experience, plus my knowledge of the city of Live Oak, to work for everybody, and I'll be respectful to everybody that is on the council and in the city, and we'll make Live Oak a thriving city again. And thank you very much.
Thanks.
Johnny?
Thank you to everyone for putting tonight together. As I thought about putting together my closing statement, the phrase "on the heels of courage" came to my mind. As I processed to what it meant, the following came to mind. I sit here as a candidate for city council, for the city I love on the heels of courage. Courage inspired me. From seeing a Semleyman Gallagher fight, to seeing my pastor navigate of keeping a church open, to seeing our local business owners keeping their doors open, their courage demanded my courage, and that is why I sit here tonight, running for city council. I love my city, and I love my neighbors. I love the people of Live Oak. I understand there is much to learn, but understand that us wrestlers are relentless. My priorities are to ensure that we are fiscally responsible, business-friendly, and create a community that we are proud to be a part of, but I cannot do it alone. In November, the voters of Live Oak have two seats to fill, and I humbly ask that you vote Johnny Sabios for Live Oak City Council. And together, we will create an even better Live Oak. Thank you, and may God bless our nation, our state, and our city.
Thank you. Jeremy?
All right, thanks again for this opportunity tonight, and everybody that has made this candidate forum possible, greatly appreciate it. And I also thank the viewers and the community for tuning in. As you've heard tonight, we discussed a lot of topics and issues. City council definitely has many challenges ahead of them, but Live Oak also has much, so much potential. And I just want to remind everyone, this election is their opportunity to choose the candidates that are right for the job and can help city council get back on track. I'm passionate about Live Oak, it's my home, I love it here, and I believe working together, we can make some serious improvements to our city, build stronger relationships with each other, and increase our overall sense of community. I hope this forum has provided the community with a better understanding of my priorities and plans for Live Oak. But if there's anybody out there that still has any additional questions, or just wants to give me some input, please don't hesitate to reach out through Facebook or my webpage. I really and truly look forward to the public engagement and the community outreach. I believe it's key to what the council members do, and key for us to serve the community. It would be an honor to represent you on the Live Oak City Council, and thank you so much for your consideration in the upcoming election.
Cruz?
Well, viewers, I hope you've learned something new. I believe all the candidates up here know what we've been talking about, but you might still have questions and want to know more about the issues at hand at Live Oak. Maybe you have an issue that we didn't address, and I would love to hear it and see if we can resolve that. You can reach out to me on Facebook or Instagram, Cruz for Council. Like I mentioned, I am up here as a candidate because things have run amok. I am a lifelong resident, I know the issues at hand, and I also know the solutions that the residents want. It's simple. Elect leaders from the city to carry out the city's vision. It is going to be a very monumental election, so regardless, if you have already been shied away from me, I would love for you guys to vote. Please, please cast your vote, have your voice heard. And I respectfully ask that you vote Cruz Mora for Live Oak City Council on or before November 3rd. Thank you.
Lockfair?
Thank you, Bob. I'd like to thank Appeal Democrat, Chamber of Commerce, and everyone behind the scene for putting this forum together. I'd especially like to give a thanks to the best wife a man could ever ask for, is my wife, Amber G. Thank you for being my backbone and source of information in every aspect of her life. To my children, Jeevan Singh, to Jinder Kaur, Srinath Singh, thank you for always providing me with the courage to do what is right. Let's put Live Oak first. Our residents deserve someone who will work hard to champion them and their cause and favor of creating a stronger, more viable community for all to enjoy. The soccer park, skate park, Highway 99 improvement, LED streetlights, mural project, affordable housing for all ages, strong fire department, strong police department, and coming soon to motorcycle cops for traffic control throughout the city is an example of what can be accomplished when we set aside our personal bias and bond together for the greater good of our community. There's no limit to what we can accomplish when we work together. With your support, we can continue to improve city of Live Oak and improve the quality of life in city of Live Oak. Please vote for the best candidate, and that is Lockfair Singh Kag. May God bless city of Live Oak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
I want to thank the chamber, the Appeal Democrat, my supporters, and everyone viewing tonight. I have a list of things I want to accomplish once elected. Public safety and the well-being of our community and our residents is of my top priorities. Our city budget is another top priority. So many vital things revolve around our city budget, water and sewer rates, taxes, education, youth programs, roads, businesses, public safety, and these will be my priorities once elected. I will update the general fund policies, make sure we have sound financial practices in place. There will be, there were errors made in the 2019 and 20 budget. Those budgets were approved by city council with accounting errors. It is now more important than ever to bring financial responsibility to our city council and work as a team. With the right experience, a great deal can be accomplished through our city budget. While I was out campaigning, water quality was a top concern. In 2005, Well 5 had nitrate issues, and it was eventually decommissioned. Well 7 was planned to replace Well 5. It has taken the city 11 years to replace Well 5. And because of these delays, it costs the city additional monies. It has taken eight years to repair and install the West Water Line, roads left sitting not repaired. How can we move our city forward this way or function properly? Once elected, I plan to update our general plan and municipal codes and move our city forward with a clear vision. Being the only candidate with 22 years' experience in banking, audits, budgets, finance, fraud, and 30 years' community service, I'm qualified to serve as Live Oak City Council from day one. I want to see Live Oak affordable, attractive, thriving again, and I'm proud to be endorsed by our District 1 Supervisor Ron Solinger and the Gold Country Taxpayers Association. I humbly ask for your trust and vote. Remember to mark your ballots. Nancy Santana, thank you.
Alex?
Again, I'd like to thank all the viewers and the Live Oak residents that have watched this forum, and again, to thank the UBS Center Chamber and the Appeal Democrat for hosting this. This has mean a lot these last four years since I've been sitting on the council representing the residents, and it's been a great time, and I look forward to continuing for the future development of our city. We're a city, yes, we're small, but we're very diverse with backgrounds. And one of the things that we all care about is our safety, the future of Live Oak, and to see our city thrive. And one example that I have been introduced with being on the council is being involved with the school district. They've allowed me to come and speak with the students, to engage about their futures and their plans. I want, just like many of these parents, to see their kids go to college and get jobs and be involved in their communities. I mean, it's been very fortunate to speak with these students. And again, we have a great school system and a great school, and that's because of our great community. Just behind us is a new state-of-the-art wrestling mat. That's one of the things that I put on the city budget to purchase. Our wrestling program in our city has grown massively. We're seeing students compete on the state level, and that's something that's never really been done before. We have the new soccer park. We have kids out there, we don't have to go to Marysville anymore to play soccer. We're hosting many tournaments here and keeping it local. We have two students that have gotten scholarships on soccer, and that just shows what this community has done. And another thing, again, is being in the family business, we've been around for 50 years in Live Oak. We, I understand the residents and the issues. I've spoken with many of you and worked with you on these issues, and I continue to do that. And again, there's a lot of projects going on currently and in the future that I've taken part with, and would love to see completely done. And again, I can't thank you enough for your support, and again, to vote for Alex Tizza. Thank you.
And thank you very much. And thank you to all of our candidates for nearly 80 minutes of solid and informative discussion this evening. And I'd like to remind you that this video can be seen right up through Election Day on the Appeal Democrat Facebook page under the Video tab, as well as UBS Center Chamber of Commerce Facebook page and website, and probably several other places. So please encourage your friends to watch it. I think they'll learn quite a bit about the city. And again, thank you very much, and thank you to everybody at home this evening as well. Thanks. Remove your microphones before you stand up.
We work for sounds of pitter patter. We sweat for moments of triumph. And we look forward to lunchroom chatter. We do it to help businesses prosper and communities thrive. It takes passion. It takes leadership and innovation. And it requires plenty of perseverance and teamwork. We are the catalyst for economic growth. We are the convener for leaders and influencers. We are the champion for a stronger UBS We are the champion for a stronger Yuba Sutter. We are the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce. Grow with us.
Between work and all my other daily duties, it's hard for me to get to the bank. That's why I do all my banking using Sierra Central Online Banking with the mobile banking app. I just snap a picture of any checks I need to deposit, or I pay my bills with their online bill payer service. It's so easy and convenient. I use my laptop, desktop, PC, or mobile device anytime from anywhere. That's how I live life, at the speed of me.
This community was made for more, more kindness, more support, more hope. Together, we can overcome anything. Stay active, stay healthy, stay connected. That's what a community does. Made for more. Adventist Health.
You may already have the basic tools right in your hand, but it's more than just pushing live to communicate effectively. That's where yubasutter.live and Live StreamingYS on Facebook can help you. Make it easy to jump in. Just give us a call at (530) 301-2931, or visit our website, www.yuba-sutter.live. Yuba Sutter's home of live streaming and live streaming tools, live streaming services, technology, and training. Live streaming is yubasutter.live.